Welcome Winthrop to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of June 15, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We are back in live meeting at the Harvey Hearing Room. Meeting will be broadcast on WCAT and the public can join us remotely during public comment or any public hearings that may be held by dialing in at 1-646-558-8656 and putting in an ID number of 859-314-13972 and then pound. So please join us for public comment or any other either public comment that we have. All right, moving on, I'm going to ask Denise to please do a roll call.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Here.
Counselor Flackatt.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Littieri.
Here.
Counselor Honan.
Here.
Counselor LaConti.
Present.
Counselor Farino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here.
Thank you.
There being a quorum, I will call the meeting to order and I would ask Counselor Flackatt to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As far as general information and recommendations, I have a couple of things that I'd like to put out. Kudos to Rose Difoni, Mrs. Kelly, Veterans Officer, who this week was awarded an award, I give this a Dorothy Shamen Award by the Women's Veterans Association of Massachusetts as the most outstanding veterans agent in the state. And she had to go, because the state office was closed, she had to go out to Sharon to get that award, but it was a well-deserved award and we're very proud that we have Rose as our veteran service agent. I also have a citation that I want to acknowledge, and this citation is a town of Winthrop Town Council citation, and reads, "Be hereby known that the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its congratulations to John Johnny Floyd in recognition of receiving the Winthrop Lodge of Elks Citizen of the Year Award for 2021. On behalf of the residents of the town of Winthrop, please send our most sincere congratulations to John and offer to you our best wishes in your future endeavors, given this 15th day of June 2021 at Winthrop, Massachusetts, signed by Philip Boncory, the county council president and council members Rich Farino, Jim Littieri, Nick LaConti, Tracy Honan, Peter Christopher, Steve Ruggiero, Barbara Flackatt, and Robert DiMarco." He was given this award yesterday at Flag Day ceremonies at the Elks, and he was quite deserving. He is such a person, there's so much good in this town doing blood drives and food drives, and he goes, not just in Winthrop doing all this good work, but he goes to the Pine Street Inn on Christmas Eve with his family. Who would say Christmas Eve and go out and feed people at Pine Street Inn? And that's the kind of guy John Floyd is, so he's well-deserving of the Citizen of the Year Award. And finally, under general information and recommendations, I want to just congratulate Meredith Hurley once again, because right now, Winthrop has only two cases that are active cases, and it's because of the vaccination sites that we've been setting up. And I'm very proud that we were able to have vaccination sites in school and at St. John's, the new St. John, St. Michael Church during the past couple of weeks. We're at almost 75% of our people in Winthrop have received at least one shot, so that's fantastic. Now, the other 25%, let's get going. You've got two more opportunities. We're going to be having another vaccination site Wednesday at the middle school between 11:30 and 3:30, and if you missed out one, you have one again at St. John's on Thursday between 4:00 and 6:00. So let's try to get to 100%. You know, that would give us herd immunity and Winthrop would be a real safe community if we had everybody vaccinated. So please try to get involved. All right, I don't think we have any public hearings tonight, but we will now open it for public comment. I gave you the numbers. Is there anybody waiting on public comment?
Computer, people first or live people first?
Oh yeah, well, let's do live people first. Anybody in the audience want to speak in public comment? I think I see two hands up on the TV screen.
Shannon, want to go ahead and unmute yourself?
Hi, Shannon Poulos, President. I just wanted to address two specific items with respect to the fiscal 22 budget and the upcoming fiscal year priorities. One of them would be the town planning department. With regard to the proposed finance commission cut of the planning department budget from $100,000 to $50,000, I just want to make sure, you know, we highlight a few several important things, and I want to make a note, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not the finance commission. I think one is last year when this item was added to the budget, we did not know or we were not told that we had an expiry contract, which would require an additional $600,000 from the town's budget. Now we need that to be imposed by the taxpayers. I think had this been transparent at the time last year's budget was voted on, I'm sure there were at least some that would have reconsidered the $100,000 appropriation to town planner department in light of that fact. Secondly, with respect to what the town planning department has done throughout the past six months, we had been told that the only grant that was obtained was a $40,000 grant for bus shelters and benches from the Mass Department of Transportation, and that it doesn't seem to have been discussed with the DPW, who were expected to install these. And they have said no to install based on what I presume to be understaffing or being within terms. We've really not gotten many value from that. Lastly, the town planner, I mean, needs strategic direction from the town manager as directed by the town council. In the absence of that, until we stabilize and hire permanent town manager, you should be concerned about where the direction of the planning department is focused, in the absence of a town manager employed by the town. I'd ask that the town council please make necessary and financially prudent decision here based purely on cost benefit analysis, not personal feelings involving those recommendation. The only second thing I'd say is not a budget recommendation per se, but just more a recommendation that came out of the finance commission in light of the cyber attack that happened to the school department this year, and just more broadly, the lack of investment or resources in our IT department across the town. I'd ask, and I know this is concerning many residents, but the town council and town manager may take on a thorough review of our IT department and make this a priority in fiscal 22. I'd ask the town manager to get a final executed contract with the trial as soon as possible, given they've already provided services and it doesn't seem clear that we have a final executed contract. You should also receive the annual security assessment that we were set to pay for $75,000 for, as indicated in the draft contract, and have that presented at a near term council meeting. Once we obtain the final executed contract and security assessment, I hope this is referred to the town's Information Technology Commission for review and recommend further reaction based on those findings, including reviewing the current town IT staffing in addition to the outsourced IT support model. Lastly, I just want to thank the tremendous leadership and diligence of Jim Littieri, who's the Chair of the Finance Commission. I'm not sure there's a person in this town who understands the budget better than him. I hope the town of Winthrop understands that, if you might be present for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next, we have another question.
We have Mr. Gill. Mr. Gill, if you want to unmute your phone.
Who is that? I cannot read.
Peter Gill.
Peter Gill. Hi, Peter, you're on.
He's still muted.
Peter, unmute yourself.
So, here we go.
All right.
Are we there?
You are.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Gill, can you mute your TV, please? Not your phone, just your TV.
Oh, okay. How's that? Is that better?
That is much better, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to say good evening, counselors, and I don't want to be repetitive over and over again, but to continue to deliberate on the middle school rezoning, which is on tonight's agenda, I ask you to please consider the compatibility of the neighborhood with the neighborhood as you're deliberating, and consider restricting any development within 100 feet of the Waldemar Ave and Walden Street project to be limited to two and a half stories, as they are with the residential district zoning. And I know that this probably won't be a residential district, so I was considering the fact that it could be a piece of it to review the different.
Is that just good?
Yes.
Also, any facade or that front facing the residences should be compatible with the neighborhood. No storefronts, no unattractive spacing on the building, whatever it is. If this is not addressed in the zoning change, please include it in the acceptance of the RST. So thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you for your hard work, and I know that you've spent a lot of time, a lot of hours, love that's put into what's actually going to happen there eventually. So, thank you again, have a good evening, and drop your phone.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else?
Wendy Clarkage.
Hi, Wendy.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the council for the first annual pride flag raising today. Well attended, it was beautifully done, and it made a lot of our folks who are here in our town feel very included, and that's something I know that we all strive to do. Secondary reason that I wanted to speak was regarding the proposed changes for the town planner. Planner's responsibilities are so important to a town like ours, where we are currently striving to increase economic development and find sources of revenue. And I understand that it's a hard decision, and lots of things have to be cut, trimmed, and redone, but not giving a person the opportunity with proper guidance and having, you know, a direct boss to work for during the, well, the interim town manager came in, I feel that measuring her job performance in her first few months of being here really goes against her and not some of the circumstances that she was thrown into as a brand new employee. Additionally, I feel that if we lose a full-time town planner, we're losing the full-time potential to add to our revenue, buying grants, someone to work with, planning and zoning, to get these things through faster than we need, and change the dynamic of people who want to invest in Winthrop. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there anyone else on public comment? Either on Zoom or in person? Seeing no hands, no one in person, okay. We will move on. There'll be another public comment at the end of the meeting, and we will now move on to committee reports, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence? Denise, I know we got a lot of letters about trees and so on in the past week.
Like those previous two, the only email I got was from Peter Gill, which he reflected in his comment.
All right, moving on then to committee reports. And the Finance Committee report, first, I would like to thank the Finance Committee for all the hard work they've been doing over the past couple of months since the budget was submitted by the town manager. Those people have put in a tremendous amount of hours, and I want to publicly thank them. The Citizens Advisory Committee of Karen Chavez, who's here in the audience tonight, Jan Twombly, Brent Farrell, William Galt, Joe Handlin, Shannon Poulos, who was just online with us, Matthew Gorkowski, Gorkoskowitz, I'm sorry, and the counselors, Jim Littieri, of course, who was the chairman, Rich Farino and Tracy Honan. I thank you so much for the hard work you put into bringing us a budget that we're going to vote on later tonight, and now we can have a committee report, and we're doing the budget under old business.
So we'll do a Finance Committee first. The Finance Committee, the Subcommittee on the Council, met early this evening, and we had two items on the agenda. The first was that the town council transfer $3,200 from the town council reserve to the veteran agent account. Now, this is to replace plaques that have either been stolen, broken, to replace, I think, a dozen plaques and two poles that are actually missing. So this is a $3,200 allowance to enable the veterans agent to go and replace that. We did meet earlier, this has unanimous recommendation from the council, and we will take this up in old business. The second item on the agenda was to appropriate $80,000 from free cash to replenish the town manager's legal services account due to extraordinary legal expenses as estimated for the remainder of fiscal '21. So just for clarification, so people understand, there are different lawyers that work for the town in different manners for different items. In the town manager's line, there is an outside legal which handles all the collective bargaining throughout the town. So there are many unions that are in bargaining negotiations right now. That's where this expense is coming from. It's not from any other legal expense, it's strictly related to the collective bargaining. This was when we did the budget last year. It was underfunded, which we knew when we made recommendation on, so we are now paying the price of that, which, again, when the Finance Commission makes their recommendation, we're trying to alleviate this from happening next year. But there was, so that's $80,000 from free cash. It was discussed, it is going forward to the council with positive unanimous recommendation, and that will also be discussed in old business. That was it for the Finance Committee. The Finance Commission, as the council president said, and I thank him for his kind words, met an incredible amount of time, and I also, as I go on, want to echo the town, the council president's thanks. This is, it's an 11-page report. I am asking the council clerk to make sure that this goes on the website so people can look and read the whole report. I do not want to, and I'm sure nobody wants me to, read the whole report, but I am going to read a good portion of it and make sure we cover the highlights. So I will say that the members of the Finance Commission met on Thursday, June 3, 2021, for a final review of the town manager's fiscal '22 budget. The Commission met a total of 14 times, totaling over 46 hours of analysis, review, discussions, interviews, debate, public input, and ultimately this recommendation. We are pleased to submit our recommendation for the town council's consideration. Prior to offering our recommendation, it is necessary to understand some of the factors that have influenced the budget and ultimately led to our decision. Now, we talk about revenue and revenue projections and operating expenses, and the projected federal general fund revenues for fiscal '22 are $54,994,887, which is an increase of a little over $1 million, or almost 2% over the fiscal '21 budget. While this is a modest increase, it is only achievable through the use of $130,000 from general stabilization funds and $450,000 from OPER funds, and we'll describe OPER funds a little later. The utilization of general stabilization funds for annual continuing expenses goes against the purpose of the fund. Generally, it should only be used for one-time expenses or capital projects and not the funding of reoccurring annual expenses. However, it is also set aside for financial emergencies, which was the case in fiscal '21. Total revenues for fiscal '22 amount to $69,071,553. This is an increase of a little over $3 million. The majority of the general fund revenues, roughly $35 million and change, or about 65% are from property taxes, inclusive of an increase within the guidelines established by the Prop 2.5 legislation. This also includes debt exclusions. State aid is the second largest component of the general fund. The fiscal '22 projection of state aid is a little over $12 million, an increase of almost $300,000 over fiscal '21. This figure is subject to change up and down when the state, when the final state budget is determined. Local receipts, Massport and MWR mitigation money, as well as other smaller revenue source, provide the balance of the fund. It is worth noting that the town negotiated another 10-year deal with the MWR in 2016, and it continues an annual escalator clause. $150,000 of that increase for the fiscal '22 had been designated for use in the capital budget. And the following summarizes significant changes in the operating budget from fiscal '21. The school's operating budget increased by $650,000 from $22,242,750 to $22,892,750. This increase in the school budget is less than half of the dollar increase from fiscal '21, however, it does represent 64% of the total of the new available funds for the town of Winthrop in fiscal '22. It does not include out-of-district tuitions associated with the Northeast Vocational School, as well as the Essex Technical High School, nor does it include expenses associated with grants, including coronavirus relief funds, CAREZAC, and OPER. The school's share of fringe benefits, which includes health coverage, pension, insurance, is not included in the school budget. These expenses are included in the town's budget under the non-departmental expenses, along with any other departmental expenses. The cost of the school's benefit line in '21 budget was $4,62,772, and for fiscal '22, it is estimated at $4,210,540. The town's contribution to the Northeast Vocational School and the Essex Technical High School for fiscal '22 is just under $1 million, compared to $833,000 in fiscal '21. The fiscal '22 school budget inclusive of fringe benefits and out-of-district tuitions is $28,101,519. In fiscal '21, we did make our final payment towards the Gorman Fort Bank School, which will save a little over $500,000 a year for the town in repayment of debt. We entered into a new five-year trash contract in fiscal '21, which has resulted in a 39% increase in the cost of trash and recycling for fiscal '22. This equates to a $601,328 increase, which has led the town to create a solid waste enterprise fund supplemented by the town by the amount of $1.264 million. The remaining balance will be generated by user fees. Property insurance for the town is funded at $606,730 in fiscal '21 and has increased 14% to $693,341 for fiscal '22. This is a significant concern for the Finance Commission, and it puts the town in a very vulnerable position in the future. In other considerations, we talked a little about OPER funds earlier. The town is using $450,000 in OPER funds for the operating budget, and it's very concerning to the Finance Commission on a couple of fronts. Using one-time money for reoccurring expenses is never good, and more significantly, we are using funds that we don't have yet. The Commission understands that many municipalities in the Commonwealth are using these funds in their budget, however, the direction in using these funds is constantly changing. Now that the funds, now the funds have to be applied for, where before they were going to be given out to the towns, as it is discussed below, we want to dismantle, we want to talk about the structural deficit that has been created within the town budget. And as far as the structural deficit, the fiscal '22, as filed by the town manager, relies on $580,000 in one-time revenues, as we just discussed, from OPER, as well as the town stabilization funds. While the Finance Commission is not proposing to change this recommendation, it does want to highlight that the use of one-time revenues to balance a budget is a concern that will need to be resolved through increased revenues, budget reductions, or some combination of the two in future years. The town cannot continue to rely on one-time sources of revenue to support ongoing expenses without impacting the long-term financial stability of the town. Excuse me, the stabilization fund, the fiscal '22 budget relies on a stabilization fund draw, as we discussed, of $130,000. While fiscal '22 proposed draw reflects a slight reduction compared to the fiscal '22 budget, the '21 budget, where we took $149,000 from the stabilization, we continue needing to use these monies to address shortfalls in this situation caused by the town's trash contract. The Finance Commission cites the repeated use of stabilization funds to support ongoing operations of the town as a major concern. The town must take steps in the future fiscal years to eliminate the structural deficit masked by the use of one-time funds. The IT department for the town is a major concern for the Finance Commission, and the current IT budget is equal to $209,000, including one full-time systems administrator with a salary and longevity benefits totaling $59,000, and another $150,000 consisting of outsourcing IT support. The majority of the town's IT support is outsourced to Thrive Operations. These were previously provided by retrofit technologies. Thrive was contracted during fiscal '21 in retrofit's place. However, it's unclear exactly what the date in terms of the new contract are, as well as we have been unable to attain a final executed contract. The contracts we have seen, one-time costs between $96,104,000 plus reoccurring annual costs of between $50,000 and $73,000. There's also a discrepancy in the term of the contract. One version has it at one year and another has it at three years. Also, the draft contract indicates an effective date of July 1, 2020, despite the fact that the draft contract dated 9/22/20 and 10/1/20. In addition, we were told that even though these were the draft dates, the contract was actually effective March 21. It is important to remember that our school department suffered a cyber attack during the current year and caused serious disruption in the ability to effectively teach children during the remote COVID learning environment. Therefore, we recommend that the town council and the town manager take a thorough review of our IT department and make that a priority for the fiscal year '22. We recommend that the town manager get a final executed contract with Thrive as soon as possible. We should also insist we receive an annual security assessment indicating in the draft contract and have, indicated in the draft contract, and have that presented at a near-term council meeting. Once we obtain the final executed document and security assessment, we should also refer this to the town's IT committee for review, the newly formed, reformed IT committee, for review and recommend future action based on its findings, including reviewing the current town IT staffing in addition to the outsourced IT support. We feel it is imperative in this day and age that we are, when we are also heavily relying on technology to function day-to-day, that we have the proper leadership to ensure us to keep up to date with our infrastructure. Another item we discussed under capital was the E.B. Newton Clock Tower. The Commission feels that there needs to be a more aggressive approach to reflect the urgency making proper repairs to one of the town's precious assets. The E.B. Newton retained earnings has a balance of $167,000, which we feel could be a source of revenues to go forward with much-needed repairs in a phased approach. There was also a recommendation in the town manager's budget on changing the free cash policy. It was suggested to change the policy. The changes are addressed in a few areas. One was to increase the distribution to the general stabilization fund by 5%. The second, to cut in half the appropriation to the capital stabilization fund. And the third, added a new appropriation of 7.5% of free cash to the discretion of the town manager to budget capital projects. The last recommendation was to create a 5% distribution to our OPEB trust fund. The Finance Commission recommends not accepting this suggested change mainly due to the uncertainty of our two top positions, especially the CFO, as well as the town manager. The Commission feels that it would be much more appropriate for a new CFO and town manager to make suggestions to change our free cash policy reflecting their beliefs. Capital expenses, we also discussed a fire-public safety facility. For many years, Winthrop Fire Department, under both leadership of current Chief Paul Flanagan and his predecessors, has patched, jerry-rigged, and otherwise made do with buildings that have been obsolete for decades. The Central Station on Pauline Street dates to 1889, and the Beach Street Station to 1904. And this, there's an article that we referenced also. These buildings have truly reached their limits, as evidenced by photographs provided to the Finance Commission by the chief, and it's comments that the building's envelopes are failing. The Finance Commission recommends that the town council prioritize the siting and funding of a new facility for either the fire department or a combined public safety building through a debt exclusion voted on by the citizens. This is a multi-year initiative that should begin with great urgency. The safety of our community requires action now, as does the welfare of our first responders who serve us well, and have served us so well, despite the inadequacies in their facilities. So our budget recommendations, we recommend, our budget is going to come in a single recommendation, which will be voted on by the town council. It can be amended, it can be voted up or down, or, like I said, it could be amended. The reductions we are requesting is.
Chairman, I think we should do the.
Chairman, I think we should do this under all business, what we call in the budget. So we have that when the motion is--
Okay, that's fine.
And you'll do the recommendation.
So I'm just going to say in closing, we'd like to thank the former CFO, Anna Friedman, interim town manager Terry Delahanty, Assistant CFO Robbie Powers, Superintendent of the School Lisa Howard, as well as all the department managers for their cooperation. As usual, everyone's cooperation was appreciated. The budget represents a continuation of the town services to the people of Wentworth and focuses on long-term financial goals and the needs of the community. And it's respectfully submitted by myself as chairperson. And again, Karen Chavez as chairperson of Citizens Advisory Committee, Jan Trombley, Brent Farrell, William Gall, Joe Hanlon, Shannon Poole host, Matthew Gorcosowicz, and Rich Farino and Tracy Honan. I can't thank them enough. They, you know, like I said, we had in the high teens for meetings, and we had almost a hundred percent participation at every meeting. They were long, they were drawn out, we were asked to do work on our own, and I can't thank them enough for their commitment. And it's, you know, it's a pleasure to do this and to help out the town in our efforts, and we're sure that they're appreciated by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and we do appreciate it, as I said when I introduced you to begin with. All right, moving on to the next committee report, and that is rules and ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we met twice between this meeting and the last one. We took up three items. One was a new parking restriction on Ocean View Street that is going to take into account the new construction that's taking place down around the tennis courts. So it was recommended to us by TSAC that parking get restricted on where they're doing a bump out. So that will be coming out, and that was voted on with a favorable recommendation. The other item that we had on our agenda was a potential tree ordinance and moratorium, which we're seeking to get some more information on before we move forward with that. The last item on our agenda is the culmination of this past year and a half of meetings that we've had regarding the middle school zoning. So I'll just, I'll take a minute to go over what our recommendation was. It didn't change very much from what the planning board had put forward at a meeting that we had on late April. Really, we just made some word changes as well as some changes to the general applicability because we had concerns about ramifications beyond the middle school site. So we did that by only making these height changes apply to parcels of a certain size. So that way, we were really just focused on the middle school with the recommendation, and we weren't really changing the game for a lot of the residents throughout the town. Again, I brought this up in meetings, but the changes that we're going to be making is the fees in lieu of parking provision that we had, that we are, that applies to the Center Business District that we already had in place. So essentially, what we're going to be doing is increasing the fee and making it more clear that the planning board does have the authority to grant a special permit. Those things weren't very clear in the initial, in the zoning regulations that we have right now. And so we're making that change affirmatively, saying the planning board has the rights to review these applications, and also that we're going to be asking the planning board to maintain standards associated with how these, the special permits essentially are going to be granted, and that those standards be kept on file with the town clerk. In regards to the height, like I said, we're really tailoring in this on the middle school site by making sure that it applies to lots that are greater than one-hundred-thousand square feet. So we're maintaining that scaling idea that we had from residential areas that the committee was really, really wanted to take into account through this, so that we're maintaining the character that you didn't have, you know, buildings right up against other people's homes in residential areas. And also, we took into account the comments from the residents on Waldemar and Wheelock Street and ensured that there was, that the setback that is going to be in place needs to be on Waldemar and Wheelock Street for the Center Business District zone that we're going to be applying. We also took into account store vacancies. That was an issue that a lot of people had brought up. We do recognize that we have an issue with store vacancies in the Center Business District and across our town. And so what we did was we made it so that the planning board could grant a special permit if, for the commercial frontage regulation that you need to have with mixed use. So if there was someone who was making an application for greater than a hundred feet in length of frontage in a business district, the planning board could grant a special permit to them to say, you don't need to have that whole thing be commercial. So as it applies to the middle school, this would not require anybody who was to make a plan for this to have commercial frontage across that. So we also heard that from the residents on Waldemar and Wheelock Street that they didn't want to have, that they did not want to have stores up on that, in that neighborhood. So that would alleviate the, alleviate that concern, and it would also allow us to kind of reduce those vacancies that we really wanted to focus on. And we're designating, we're in line with what the planning board had recommended. We're going to recommend that we designate both parcels Center Business District. Knowing that the Center Business District zoning allows for a greater flexibility in what someone could potentially apply for. I also think it's important to note that a lot of the concerns that people had about this can be taken into account through the RFP process. So a lot of people have come to me with different ideas, saying this is what I think should go there, I think it should be this, I think it should be that. We are greatly restricted in what could go there under the current zoning that is on the middle school right now, and this would allow us to have more of a, more, it would allow us more flexibility in what we could potentially have for an RFP, for someone to apply for. So that was really the goals that we had with the site, and that's sort of, that's the direction that I, that this ordinance really goes in. So that was what we came with.
All right, and we'll present that during all business, and it'll probably be one of the first things. I think we're going to take all the rules and ordinances motions first and then do the budgets, because there's so many different motions. So when we get to all business, you're going to be up first.
Okay.
All right. And we'll now move on to the town manager's report. Are there any other committee reports? Did any other committees meet this past month?
Wish I was going to be shot, but it's not, so. First, I'll let Heather, I mean Meredith go. I know the council president has done an excellent job already representing figures, but please, if you have anything to add.
Sure. So as we put out the numbers today, obviously, we're in much of a difficult place for the past few months. So our total cases as of two thousand thirteen, thirty-five, currently--
I'm wondering if people can hear her? Do we know if people on TV can hear her without having one of these microphones right in front of her?
She has one right above her, so we have several on the ceiling, so they should pick up--
The WCATs. I also--
Okay. Because if you wanted to move to a microphone, you could as well.
No, as long as they can hear me, I'm good.
Okay.
And so as the council president had mentioned, we are doing well with our vaccine program. Given those that are currently eligible, those over the age of twelve, we have seventy-five that have received at least their first thousand five vaccine. And as of our testing data come up to for the two weeks after nine, we had eight positive tests for days leading up to tonight, and a total of one thousand residents positive and our incidence rate. And we will be doing clinical next week using Pfizer, so we can spread our bandwidth, those down to twelve and all the way up, so.
So please help Meredith out and show up to get a vaccination, because we don't want to set up a vaccination site and have five people sore, but it defeats the purpose. Please come down and get vaccinated.
I just want to thank, as Councilor Terry mentioned, Anna Freeman, and also Austin Faison for submitting the budget. Sorry, that was incredible, incredibly helpful. Anna has entertained our calls, questions. We appreciate her for doing so. And of course, Robbie Powers for jumping up and helping out. He has a lot to do, and we've added to that workload, so we're cognizant of that and trying to help him along the way, so, and take some of that load back off. So over the next couple of weeks, if you could just be patient with finances, Robbie closes the books and opens fiscal year, we'd appreciate that. On to some sad news, Lieutenant Mary Kossafi lost her child in the past few weeks, nineteen-year-old son Dante. Mary gave Dante a great life, and there's no one else that could have done better than Mary. Mother, tremendous employee, certainly our prayers and thoughts are with Mary, and they will continue to be with Mary in the weeks, months, and years to come. I just wanted to pause and thank everyone for their support of all the departments, council, duty as well, so certainly a tough time. As the council president mentioned, Rose did receive the Deborah Sampson Award. I wanted to also congratulate Rose for that tremendous accomplishment that is voted by her peers. So it's a significant year of wood. And we had a couple of questions on CBD reclaiming. I sent out the CBD reclaiming schedule. My other question come to me about temporary parking lot in French Square will be closed during July sixth and the ninth. Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you. That will reopen after that reclaiming, the bricks being removed, right?
That's correct.
Anything else you want to add on that in Palmyra? Please feel free.
Yeah, I'll just, we're actually at an exciting transition with the CBD project. We're finally at the, prepping up the, do the last utility work, we're getting into the surface, the street and surface work. So next week, you'll see them start lowering the castings, which are the manhole structures and catch basins, in preparation of the reclaiming, which will start the week of the twenty-first. They'll start in the areas of Somerset and Cottage Park, we'll get that reclaimed and put into the binder course, then they'll move over to the other areas around French Square the week after the fourth. Palmyra, we've got a tentative schedule for the roadwork of June thirtieth and July first. That roadwork will incorporate Palmyra Street, Waldemar, section of Wheelock, Crescent Street between Elmont and Shirley, and, I'm sorry, yeah, Crescent Street between Elmont and Shirley, and a portion of Waldemar Street as well. That basically restores all the prior sewer work that occurred last calendar year. Basically, those two--
Thank you. The planner and I had engaged in discussions over her assuming the conservation agent duties, as well with some support from Denise. With that announcement, so certainly all those functions and duties. And I want to thank Rachel for coming to me and discussing that. So what the PD did, when we were in Chelsea on Monday assisting the Chelsea Police, Everett Reap, one of their detectives passed cancer, also has a son on the job as well, allowed the Chelsea Police Department's full police department to pay in the funeral week for that detective. The seniors center will be reopening on July twelfth. We're excited, Kathy Dixon is here. We'll get the seniors back in their building, doing some functions, so happy to hear that. I'm glad we're starting to reopen everything Kathy's last building that reopened. I'm very pleased with that. I'll be requesting an executive session on the first council meeting in July to discuss a personnel matter and also to discuss a collective hiring pertaining to one of the local unions. Certainly, we will, if granted by the president, we will notify the employee executive session happening by-- Treasurer Collector sadly has given me her notice, her last day of employment here after just about fourteen and a half years, will be on July eighth. HR Department is working with Monica Ford up with an interim Treasurer Collector. Job description is posted. Awesome. So Monica has also mixed emotions about leaving us, and certainly she's been a great employee. She also has stated that would help out with government while we train them. There'll be no gap. Lisa Howard is hired, her business manager and has procurement so-- That person, a member from the town, Monica worked in contract service with us on her days off, so we know if they happen service. I'm very pleased about that. The solid waste recycling manager position has been posted, we're hoping to get some candidates. Steve's department has been inundated with phone calls. He invited me down to watch how many phone calls they get. I chose not to go, but thank you for the offer. So they're managing all those complaints and all those corrections that need to be done. So I think it's, we need to get somebody in position, onboarded. And speaking of trash, we also need to start looking at the ordinances, Mr. President, and redeveloping and either redoing the current ones or deleting the current ones and redoing a whole new trash ordinance. So I would ask the council president to assign that the rules and ordinance. Their Waste Committee has been working on some draft language that can be forwarded, and certainly they've committed to helping out during that process. So we funded, we passed a motion for the fee of one-sixty, but now we need enforcement authority to actually, people are not putting trash out correctly, they have too many barrels out. Are we going to just allow all barrels? Are we going to allow one barrel? So there's a lot of work ahead of us that we need to get on the books and have public comment and really flush this out. I want to remind people, you know, next year it is a two-point-five increase, trash services from Nisha, so, you know, that's just on the pickup and of trash. And then it might be slightly under, I see Jim going to his computer, it might be just a tad under Jim, but it's like two-point-four-point, you know what I mean? If you round it up, it's a two-point-five increase. I don't know what tipping fees are going to be next year, so that's a concern, and I don't know how often tipping fees go up. That's something that my intern has drafted a chart, watch tipping fees, and start in July one, we'll be watching them on a monthly, we can get the reports on a monthly basis. So we'll be watching the tipping fees and how much wasted we're tipping. But our goal, remember, is to reduce our waste, not add to the waste. So I think zero waste has been very helpful where, hopefully, with the ordinance changes, we can have some of their input and recommendations drafted in. So I just like to, I've gotten a lot of emails, and I think today was a great celebration of raising the Pride Flag. I've gotten a lot of emails and calls about a lot of different people wanting to put their own flags, banners, in adornments on town property. Pride Town Manager had made a policy statement that nothing except an American flag and state flag, POW flag will fly on the back of a police car, a fire truck. I think we need to actually now start to develop policies. I think the council is the place we should develop this. There was a case on point out of the city of Boston in two thousand and nineteen about raising a flag and what types of flags are permissible and not permissible. So we have significant legal authority. I've spoken to KNP, who forwarded me that case. But again, I think we should give notice, we should give a mechanism if people want to apply, and we should give them an answer of why and why not. In the Boston case, they have non-secular flags only, so all types of religious flags are not going to be raised. So stuff like that, I think we really need to have a role, develop policy. And I think the council is the appropriate spot to have that discussion and have public input. And again, I don't mean to diminish or take away from the great event that we had on Friday, but I think moving forward-- But I think moving forward, let's publish the policy. Everyone knows it ahead of time in what type of flags and adornments and articles will we want to put. I would be asking during that process that police cruisers, DPW trucks and fire apparatuses left to the jurisdiction of the town manager. Because that's who's the day-to-day supervisor of those. So that's, I got an inquiry about opening Miller's Field. I've had a discussion with Sean. He's been awarded forty-seven positions for Mass Sport that first week of July. Some of those, the positions of Miller's Field was not in that forty-seven. So Sean has said the council has appropriated money to run that. And he's telling me it's about three thousand dollars to run that. The good news is Rachel Rollins is, I mean, she has some money that she's going to, giving the Fox and Rex, maybe a thousand dollars to expand some of the summer programs, some to the school and some to Casa. So that will be helpful, but that won't be enough to open the Miller's Field and put a summer work there. Make sure there's no bikes on the track, you know, no drinks are being spilled on the turf. So if that's the will of the council, there was a cost. I can have Sean run it and then tell me what the cost is at the end, or we can fund it upfront. I know Robbie's listening, probably cringing, saying you can't run it in the negative, Terry. We gotta fund it upfront. So during, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll finish and then I'll take any questions. The maintenance shed in Dog Park is over budget about one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we put the IRP out. The IRP, the lowest bidder, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over budget. Again, it's not over the estimates of the DPW director, but over the budget that he was given to work with. So I would ask that to go to finance commission for an examination and recommendations to come back. And I think the DPW director will be happy to attend those meetings and to give opinions. We might have to put this back out and bid different things differently. That's one of the options. The other option, what, you know, we can't just say we're not putting the shed there. There's a contract that's signed by the prior town manager. The actual specifications of the shed are really detailed in the agreement. So we cannot breach the agreement. We have to, whatever is due to the golf club is due to the golf. So we'll be happy to examine that and answer any questions on that. IT security assessments, I'm going to ask the council that when we do discuss, let's do it in an executive session, deployment of security forces or devices, can go into executive session. And again, we had a recent attack that we were intimately involved. I said, we, Wayne Carter, and a couple of our staff members with Homeland Security. So we're well aware of what needs to be done. Any assessment that is done, I will have Homeland Security that we're connected with review and peer review the actual assessment report. Zoom meetings, it's great that we're here in person, but I would be remiss if I do not speak up and say Larissa and Denise who are taking these Zoom meetings on over the past year and a couple of months now, who watched, I know back in April, what, over eight hundred hours of time on Zoom meetings. My building is now open. The problem is, I cannot expect Larissa to work in my office all day until seven. I go home and do four hours or two hours or three hours a night in, as well as Denise. So if we're going to do Zoom meetings, we have to figure out how are we going to do it, who's going to do it. But I know selfishly, I need Larissa back in my office because she's the only other employee I have. So I just want to be clear and upfront that we can certainly train people, whether the committees and the boards to do the Zooms, or we can look at hiring a student who might be better adapted to doing Zoom than I am. So, you know, those are the options we have to struggle with when we went from one platform to another and now we're trying to hire that platform. It takes more people to do. So the OPEB funding, I would just ask during your budget discussions, all the other recommendations about free cash, I agree with Councilor Terry. The only thing I caution, OPEB discussions, to have a discussion on it. So those are other post-employment benefits. No, we should be expected to be starting to put a deposit on our other post-employment benefits possibly. That will affect our finances and affect our loan ratings. So, you know, it's, you know, I'm not saying you have to put a million dollars there, but put a deposit on it. And every year, put a small deposit on it. I think we'll be in good steam. Want to remind everyone that we're one community, one team. The budget process has a tendency to bifurcate us and put one department against the other department. I don't want to see that happen. We've worked hard. Remember the days that it was the police against the fire and the fire and the police against schools and have lived through that, those days. We've become one. And then I just urge my team, be respectful, speak up about their budget. They're more than welcome to. They do it in a respectful fashion. And I would expect my team to stay as a team and not be soliciting someone else's money for their own. So that's, I just wanted to get that out there, what I expect from my people. And lastly, the IRP for the middle school, I would ask the council to consider putting an IRP committee together and to work with the town planner to actually get the IRP out and have public hearings and meetings, much like Councilor Christopher has been having for that middle school on zoning. Important that we have a public process. It's important that we have neighborhood's input and buy-in before we go off to the IRP. So the contractors which are coming fast and furious into my office, just to talk, there's multiple developers in one group looking at different properties from Shirley Street to deep into the point to the middle school site. So people are attracted here. And I just, I don't want the, I don't want the process to last forever either. Because we're trying to catch the turf here and the bubble. We don't want the bubble to break on us as we, and then we're left with an open bill. So that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
It sounds like you've got quite enough. When you're talking about doing the trash policy, do you need help on that? Do you want me to send that to the Public Works Committee to work on it with you? Or do you have the staff that can, you do it?
No. So we would love input from any committee you want to send it to. The Zero Waste Committee is going to draft, is
I understand we have the Zero Waste Committee.
They'll send it to me and then we'll bring it to the committee and Zero Waste can help you.
Yeah. I know Wendy's been working hard on it and with her committee, but I think we also should have some council input. So I think I'd like to see the Public Works Committee get assigned, working with you on that task. And as far as the flag policy, I think they'll probably go to rules and ordinance. And I would like to assign that rules and ordinance to work on a flag policy because I agree, you know, we do want to see that diversity, inclusion, includes, you know, different ethnicities and so on that are having state-recognized months to fly, be able to fly their flag here. And maybe we set it up that all these kinds of things would be done at the cultural center because there is a cultural issue. But I think that should go to the Rules and Ordinance Committee to help out with. Does anybody else have other questions for?
Steve, go ahead. Thanks. So I'll go from the beginning of the report. First of all, you know, not that COVID is behind us, but it's in the rearview mirror right now in some respects. And a lot of times we have short memories and stuff. And I just want to again, go on record and just commend Meredith for the, you know, year and a half almost of incredible work ethic and all you've done for the town. So, you know, some people are going to say, geez, in two months, hopefully we're back normal and everything. And people kind of quickly forget about things. And I don't want to forget. And I'm sure the council agrees with me that we can't thank you enough for your work. Quick question for Steve on the reclaiming, when you're talking about reclaiming the roads, are you also, so it's obviously the main road and they're going to reclaim it and put a binder coat down. Does that also include the sidewalk repairs then, or is that later?
So after the roads are put in the binder course, then they'll start the curb hour and hour of the sidewalk work. Sidewalk work will include the electrical conduits they need to go in prior to closing them up. All the roads will get put in the binder course prior to any start of sidewalk.
Okay. Including curbing and everything?
Curbing will be cut in after, so the binder course will go to the existing curb. And then the curb, you know, the curb lines will be saw cut and the curb lines will be modified and reset as needed in sidewalk.
So that work, it's on the schedule as of July nineteenth to the twenty-third. There will also installation of electric conduit. New street lighting will also begin that week. And it's expected to take four weeks.
So that's, it's phased though. So the week of the twenty-first is concentrating on the cottage, Somerset, you know, down to Suet's Link area. That'll be put in binder. And then the reclaim process will move, you know, towards Putnam Street. Everything will be put in binder. Then the curb work will begin.
And on the trash barrels, I just want to say, you know, it hurts me a little. The rollout didn't go as we had planned. We had been promised, and you were in the room with me and Steve when we had the conversation, that we were getting ninety-six gallon barrels and we got sixty-four gallon barrels. You know, extremely disappointed in that. It's, you know, it's going to be a rollout that's going to take a lot of work. And I can't thank Steve enough for his work in this too. So I hope that people will be a little patient with that. But it seems to be, you know, I went around the town last week and it's amazing how many people just do what they're supposed to do. And it was really nice to see. On Miller Field, you know, that shouldn't be, if we're going to open it, that has to be open to the public. That's a, you know, people paid ten million dollars for that field. That's one thing that we told them that we would absolutely do. So older people would be able to walk around the track at night. I'm an older person. I don't mean old in terms of, but younger people should be able to use it. You know, I go through these other towns and I see people using their facilities at night. And we need to do that. So that, and I'm not blaming you. I'm saying that that has to be done and will be done. And we will do what we have to do to make sure that that happens.
It was in our agreement in two thousand and eighteen that I signed with the school. So I'm committed to public access to that area as well. But we just want to make sure we have them monitored down there. If they're not writing their byes.
And on the dog park and shed, I encourage the town, the council president to also do what you had said. And we need to act one way or another. We can't just let it go. So how we're going to act, I'm not sure. And you mentioned OPEB. The town has a policy, you know, I know the town manager had wanted to increase funding for OPEB. We're, you know, like ninety-nine point nine percent of other municipalities behind on OPEB. But we're way ahead of other municipalities on our funding of our pensions and retirements. And we're going to be funded by two thousand and thirty-one, which is way ahead of any other communities. And the plan has always been after that to put that amount that we're putting into the funding, which is about four hundred and fifty odd thousand dollars, and stop putting that towards OPEB. And that's it.
Thank you for that information, Councilor Terry. It's just, I know it's easy when budgets are tight, to start looking at what obligations we really don't need to into. It does affect us and I'm glad that we have a plan.
We do.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments, questions?
Just because we have an ordinance coming up about parking provisions on Ocean View, I was wondering if you could just explain a little bit about the differences that are going to be taking place on that street now that we have the tennis court. And maybe this is more appropriate to direct to Steve, but just a little bit of a plan. Okay.
You know, people come to me to complain about that specific intersection after we install. So it's really from the gate opening to Ocean View. You know, I don't know how many people travel at eight o'clock in the morning. I do every morning. The whole street probably should have no park. But, you know, we're trying to find balance. Where's the safety issue on that street? And that's where the safety issue sits. And so when people park there, we have an event at the school or at the golf club, that's where the issue becomes, is right there. So people coming on the wrong side of the road, as people are taking that turn, you want to open and widen that area so people can make the stop sign safely without crossing over and staying on someone else's side of the road. Really to keep right of center. We're trying to keep them right of center and allowing to pass at the same time at that mouth and that intersection. So I know Steve sat through the TSAC meeting. So, but that was, you know, Chief Flanagan came to me with that concern. He got citizens' complaints about that area. So Steve, you have it, and please do.
And just, basically the improvements that were made down there were needed. There was very, very poor sight, line of sight as Ocean View approached Cross Street. There was really no defined roadway, you know, at that, at that turn. So the realigning of the curb to create line of sight was very much needed. But at the same time, because the road narrowed, the island was also needed to differentiate the lanes, as you spoke to keeping cars where they're supposed to be. And that's why, you know, with that island, it was determined that from the cemetery entrance down, it just couldn't accommodate parking. We actually went ten feet west of the entrance, just so that for funeral processions can make that swing from Ocean View without, you know, parked cars interfering. So that's why the ordinance was created. It works well now, I think.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Done? Okay. Well, except that report is complete. Thank you very much, Town Manager, for that report. We will move on to the school department. But before we do that, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes. I guess you all thought I forgot, but it's because I wasn't at the last meeting. Unfortunately, I had a death in the family. But I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the June first, twenty twenty-one minute.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Terry, second by Councilor DeMarco. Is there any discussion on it? Are there any additions or changes? I wasn't there, so I don't know. Hearing none?
It was a very well-run meeting, very smooth.
It was. I'm sure that it was much better run by Peter than by Mike. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Missed those.
We don't have to do that anymore. As far as the Zoom calls, I abstain. Thank you. All right. School Department report. The school committee had a meeting on June seventh and it was a hybrid meeting. Part of the people were live, part of the people were on remote. That's not going to happen anymore at school committee now that the law is passed and everybody that is voting or on a committee has to be in person as of today. We'll see if that changes with anything that's coming out of the legislature. But at the school committee meeting, we were told that all the seniors had a great all-night party at the school. Then the prom was held and it was successful. It was held at the Hyatt last night and awards night went very well. And graduation, of course, was well. And I know other people here in the room, Terry and I, were at the graduation. It was very well-run. Unfortunately, we got a few bugs at the end when it started to get dark, kind of buggy on that field. And I didn't think that was going to happen where it's not artificial turf and not real grass. But we got some bugs at the end. But it was a well-run graduation. Out of the hundred and forty-four graduates, seniors that graduated, a hundred and fifteen of them are going on to college. Three of them are going into the military. Three of them are staying at school as post-graduates with special needs. And the rest are all going into the workforce to keep our businesses going. The school, because of Susan Ackles' resignation, is actively searching for a school business manager. And they have interviewed six people and I believe they're down to two, down to one. Did they pick, I think they have picked Mr. Noel Fales? Was that the person?
Yes.
He was one of the two finalists, wasn't I?
Yeah.
Hadn't heard. But Mr. Noel Fales is the new school business manager. And that's the end of my school report. Are there any questions on the school report? Hearing none? We will move into old business. And under old business, the first thing that I would like to call upon is ordinance review committee recommendation. Is there a motion coming on that or is that going to be put over?
No, there's no motion on that.
All right. So that's going to be tabled next meeting?
Yes. We're awaiting the committee to come forward with more recommendations. Like we, like I said, we're waiting for a more complete group because the only recommendations that we got from the ordinance review committee were charter changes. which would require a vote of the, um, of the town. So we wanted to make sure that we're only having people vote once on that.
Okay, all right. And we'll table the ordinance review committee recommendations to further meetings and, and move on. The next item I think we should take up is the ordinance parking, uh, on Ocean View squad. We have a motion for that.
Thank you. Um, so the motion that was passed favorably out of rules and ordinances is that, uh, town council accept the recommendation of the transportation safety advisory committee from their May 19th, 2021 meeting to eliminate parking on a section of Ocean View Street by amending section 101690 of the town ordinances titled "Parking prohibited upon certain streets as follows." Insert the following line into the table. Ocean View Street on both sides from a point 10 feet westerly to the driveway, from a point 10 feet westerly of the driveway to the cross street cemetery to Cross Street.
Okay, uh, that is a motion coming out of committee with a favorable recommendation, so it doesn't need a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilor DeMarco.
Uh, Vice President, um, how many, you know how many spots that eliminate?
I believe it was two, but I would, okay, I would like.
Who legal spots usually four cars parked there?
Thank you, that's my only question.
Okay, any other questions? Councilor Joe?
Just a point, it was explained to us by Mikey Luis of TSEC that even though we're moving these two spots, um, with the development of the tennis court, I think an additional 10 spots will be created. So it's a seven, yeah, so it's a net gain of five spots.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? Okay, I, uh, let's see if we have an item on here called library surplus items. What is that?
Old, um, computers and printers. And so they want to dispose of it, they called the company, we had to stop them because it wasn't surplus, even though they're, they're useless.
All right, is that a motion that you put forward today?
I didn't put that forward in the last meeting.
Okay. Does anyone have the, the wording of that motion? This is a motion by a town manager that I move the town council to declare the following library items as surplus so they can be removed at no cost to the town by data recycling of New England or take any other action relative to their two. 13 computer towers, Dell Audioplex, Boston Models, including peripheral keyboards, mice, current value zero. Free printer copiers Xerox Works Center 6027, Laserjet M1152NT and HP Laserjet P2035, current value zero. Does anybody, uh, want to second that motion? All right, motion's been made. Let's have you make it rather than, uh, the town manager. Motion is made by, uh, Councilor Terry, seconded by Vice President Christopher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries? Did you have another one?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, the Winter Middle School zoning.
Sure, so we, uh, approved the following, uh, motion out of committee. Uh, number one, section 1750210, parking requirements for the Center Business District. Delete section D in section 1750210 fees in lieu of parking in its entirety and insert a new section D in section 1750210 as follows. Section D fees in lieu of parking. In the Center Business District, any commercial or mixed-use structure that is required to provide parking spaces may make payments to the town in lieu of providing for part of the onsite required parking. Payment made to the town in lieu of, in lieu of providing up to 50% of the required onsite parking spaces for a project in the Center Business District shall be allowed by special permit from the planning board consistent with the standards to be adopted by and published in advance by the planning board. These standards must be kept on file with the Winter Town Clerk. A one-time fee of $20,000, the approximate cost of a structured parking space per parking space is to be paid to the town of Winter prior to receiving occupancy permit. Fees in lieu of parking shall be deposited into a town downtown packing reserve account to be used for expenses including land acquisition, design and engineering services and construction costs related to adding parking spaces, improving the utilization of existing parking spaces, including signage, parking management activities, or reducing the need for new parking to serve the Center Business District, including pa- bicycle parking, ride sharing and improved transit. Number two, to modify the table of dimensional regulations, section 171630 for the Center Business District as follows. To add footnote 15 tag to height limits in the Center Business District. Footnote 15 shall read as follows. For lots greater than 100,000 square feet in area that are adjacent to a residential district, footnote 14 shall not apply and the maximum height shall be 35 feet at the minimum setback and may increase one additional foot up to a maximum of 48 feet so long as an additional foot of setback is provided for each foot of additional height up to 48 feet. Where the height maximum allowed is less than 48 feet, the maximum number of stories shall be 13. And add footnote 16 tag to front yard setbacks in Central Business District. Add footnote 16, along Waldemar Avenue and Wheelock Streets, front yard setbacks to be a minimum of 10 feet. Number three, mixed use under dwelling units shall be allowed on ground floors of buildings if, delete the period after the word building at the end of paragraph B and add a semicolon or, and add section C, the street frontage exceeds 100 feet in length and the maximum ground floor street-facing dwelling units do not exceed 75% of the street frontage at the discretion of the planning board by special permit consistent with the standards to be adopted by and published in advance by the planning board. These standards must be kept on file by the Winter Town Clerk. Number four, to add a new footnote two to mixed use in the CB district in section 1712130, table of use regulations. In section 1712130, table of use regulations, add footnote two to mixed use in the CB district so that it reads Y2. Add a new footnote two after footnote one at the end of the table of use regulations in section 1712130 that reads subject to section 171240, mixed use. Number five, designate both parcels of land sent to business district. To amend the town zoning map to include the CB district, the land identified on the town assessor's map as MBLU 35721 and MBLU 3632 as depicted on the town of Winter map entitled Proposed CBD Boundary 2019 by Form and Place. Delete the 2006 zoning map contained in the, in section 170820 of the zoning ordinance from section 178020.
Okay, uh, that motion is from committee with a favorable recommendation, so it does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any councils want to be heard, Councilor Terry?
Um, I, first of all, I want to thank the committee. This is another yeoman's effort and I appreciate the, um, um, the transparency that was brought out here. I do want to ask firstly if, I think three years ago, council voted to not include the rink in the middle school project. Is that still in force? We never voted otherwise.
Well, this is not the middle school project, this is zoning of the other property.
Right, so would the property include the rink? Since the rink is not part of the project, not part of that area.
No, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to do anything with the rink, we have, um, statutory issues of moving recreation. For these, um, you know, allocating property for, for other than non-recreational, uh, activity, the angles, I'm just going back to my memory of when I wrote, um, many documents on, on the zoning of that, uh, area. So that, there's a whole process to allocate that. You know, but that's, I think, needs to be in the RFP process.
I totally agree that the RFP is almost more important than the zoning and how we're going to do it. And I think that, you know, and I'm hoping that the council will be very much in the loop on, on the RFP because, you know, people, and I, and I get nervous about the zoning too, but I, I really do think the important piece is the RFP. I just want to reinforce my thought that the council voted to not include as we go forward that rink. And I hope that that vote is appreciated and not ignored. Um, I do want to thank Councilor, Vice President Christopher too for, and the committee for really trying to acknowledge the, the neighbors there because it's, um, first of all, it's my precinct and I do appreciate that and, but, you know, I get nervous on the setbacks. Um, I, I do, I did have a talk with Vice President Christopher earlier too and I appreciate the ability of people because my, the other concern with this when it comes to Center Business District for me is, uh, the impact on, um, how it was presented to us prior when we were doing the center, mainly the, the center proper. We were talking about how, you know, the first floor had to be commercial space and the floors above were residential, mixed use involved. I, I, you know, I still have a lot of hesitancy on, on putting units in Winter. I just think we're overcrowded and there's other places to develop. But, um, but I do, I think council vice president said that, um, you know, there would be flexibility in, um, a developer's plan that might include more of a, you know, not have to include a mixed-use piece. They could go for a variance of some sort, I believe.
Exactly.
Right? Um, and this is a significant size lot that the changes do, the changes that you are proposing does affect the whole center. But in area, there really isn't another parcel that comes to this 100,000 square foot, is that correct? Including, you know, Michael's Mall would be the biggest, I could assume, and that's not even approaching the 100,000.
Yeah, I, I don't believe so, no. I think that that, it would be, without doing the math, I, I do think that that would be, this would be the only one that I know of that it would apply to. Yeah, and I do think that it's important to take into account that a lot of the things that we're taking, that we're trying to do with this is just to, uh, allow for the possibility of having this. So with, with the mixed-use requirement and the, the payment in lieu of parking provision, what we have here is a situation where you're giving someone the ability to apply for something. We're, we're not saying that, you know, we're, we're eliminating parking requirements or anything like that. We're just saying we're, we're offering the ability to do it. So if, if the planning board feels that we're in a situation where, uh, you know, we might have too much commercial frontage on a certain parcel, I think the middle school is a great example of this, then they can provide that flexibility to somebody. Um, whereas, uh, our previous ordinance may not have given that much flexibility. Well, we're making it more clear that that flexibility is there.
Councilor Freeno, you have your.
I just wanted to go back to the, uh, back in town manager, Delahanty's, uh, reference to the recreation rule use of the rink. Would that apply to the, also the gymnasium and the auditorium in the same aspect? Where under Article 97, as you know, uh, when you're disposing of recreation or, you know, block land or open space, you have to, um, replenish that inventory to the town in some other way, shape and manner if you're selling those parcels. And that's state law, that's under the Quinn bill, and I think we've all been familiarized with that, um, over the years.
So I, I don't think, from my memory, again, 2018, when I was tackling these issues, uh, last time, of the rink and there's a patch of in, out, back that was taken of a non-recreational purpose and is called a drive. And now, you know, that would still have, that has to be tackled as well during, um, this process of, of a sale. Um, you know, where was the actual gymnasium, auditorium were built? My memory going back to when they were built, um, the procedural process was corrected, so I don't think it would apply. But we will look into, um, I'll dig up my old notes and, and, um, talk to Peter and, and, you know, but again, the zoning, um, just allows a potential developer to come in. They still have to follow the process of mass general law. Me as a council and me as the town manager have to follow the same process. So if we're going to, um, advocate any of those buildings, we have to make sure that we're following state law, which has to be a home rule first. But council will be the first to, to take a whack at that.
Yeah, and I'll just also say that a lot of the things that we're talking about, uh, RFP focus and the planning board did make a series of recommendations about how we should go forward with that as well. Um, that, you know, I, I think, I hope and I encourage us to go down that road to really determine, make a lot of the determinations that they talked about in their recommendations, uh, the issues of title, uh, land surveys, uh, utility questions that they had. Um, so, you know, this really is the first part of this and we, we have a long road ahead of us, I think, with the, with the RFP as well. So, um, but the zoning, I think, is, is a little bit, is a separate issue really. Um, and, and like I said, our goals are really to provide flexibility to, uh, take into account a lot of the different ideas that we've had about the parcel over the years.
Councilor DeMarco?
Um, I just, I just want to express, I couldn't agree with, uh, chief any, any more about the need for an RFP committee to be formed to look at this, um, to address the needs of the residents in the area and to address the rink. So I just wanted to say, put that forward.
Thank you. I agree, and once we pass this, I will ask for volunteers for that.
I don't want a council committee and then have them have public hearings that be put back to you. That's what was my vision of it, that they have a council committee and the planner, they have public engagement for that process and, um...
No, I, I would anticipate putting yourself in it and the planner, maybe one or two councils, and then let's get some expertise from the public. And I would, uh, put out a call right now that anybody that has architectural, uh, you know, ability or that has been involved in RFPs before, contact us and volunteer to be on this committee because I want to make it a committee that, you know, can put together an RFP.
I don't need experience in RFPs. Uh, you know, we, we have, uh, RFP is going to be reviewed by K and P. Uh, what we need is, is expertise in building and the use of land and, uh, everything that we're going to be discussing, as Peter said, the utilities. Steve Cal has been always bashing my head in about this utility. There's one underneath the gymnasium, uh, that needs to be addressed during this process. Um, so, you know, anyone that has those experiences as well, please come forward. I'm not going to ask them to draft the RFP. Um, we'll take care of the drafting, the planner, myself and K and P. Um, but we have, you do want to hear their expertise in, in building and developing.
Okay, excellent. All right, uh, motion is on the floor. All those in favor of adopting the, uh, motion to change the, um, zoning of the middle school site signify by saying aye?
I think for zoning, you need to have 12 votes.
So, yeah, we need to have six. All right, all those, uh, in favor, please answer when your name is called.
Councilor Agaro?
Yes.
Councilor Placat?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Terry?
Yes.
Councilor Honet?
Councilor LaConte?
Yes.
Councilor Farino?
No.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes.
Motion carries. And again, I'm, I'm looking for people to put on the, uh, RFP committee and that committee will be announced probably at our next meeting, which will be in a week or two weeks. We're going to vote on that a little bit later in the meeting. We have to have another meeting before June to approve the minutes of this meeting, approving the budget so that the budget can be used on, uh, July 1st. So we will be having another meeting this month and we'll decide on the date later on. But, um, we have during that period of time to find the, find this committee. Moving on, I think that's all our ordinances, ordinance were done. The rest are all financial things and, uh, there are some that we are taking up before the budget because they're, they're for now and not, uh, part of the budget. And the first one, uh, is, uh, motion to vote for $80,000 from free cash. Councilor Terry, you have that in committee?
Yes, we did this evening.
Yes, we did this evening. A motion that, uh, move that the town council vote to appropriate $80,000 from free cash to replenish the town manager's legal services account due to extraordinary legal expenses, as estimated for the remainder of fiscal '21 or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of committee with positive recommendation, does not need a second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Anyone have any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The extensions, hearing none, voted so ordered. Motion carries.
Council President, I move that the town council transfer $3,200 from the town council reserve to the veterans agent account. That also came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not need a second.
All right. Motion has been made to stretch for $32,000 to the veteran agent account. Uh, all those, is there any discussion on it? Any discussion?
$3,200.
$3,200.
$3,200, oh, when I said, no, $3,200.
I thought you heard $32,000.
$3,200, $3,200. Okay, motion's been made, seconded, no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, now we attack, I believe, the budget. I don't think there's anything else under our business, everything else is related to the budget. So Councilor Terry, you want to make your recommendations?
Yeah, sure, so before, we're going to go one by one here. We're going to first make a motion that came before us from the Finance Commission. It will be made in one single motion and it could be discussed, altered, amended, however we see fit. We will vote on that and then we will go through the multiple, um, motions involved in passing the budget. So the Finance Commission's recommendations are increase CBA Salary Reserve line 578100. Increase it $375,000 to $450,000. I will make the motion official, then I will discuss the ramifications and reasonings for it. Increase the town manager line 530400 Outside Legal Consulting, increase by $35,000 to $100,000. Conservation line 51100 Permanent Employees, increase from $0 to $23,000. Assessing line 511100 Permanent Employees, increase $8,000 from $202,000 to $210,000. Council on Aging line 511100 Permanent Employees, increase $21,000 from $142,000 to $71,000 to $163,271. This in eight, um, well, I won't go into why. Then we have decreases, so those add up to 462,000. The budget has to be balanced, so to offset that, we are recommending the following deductions. Deduction one on the DPW line 534103 Cell phones, reduce from $11,000 to $7,000. School appropriation, reduce, um, reduce appropriation 500000. $50,000 from $22,892750 to $22,842750. Town council line 579100 Annual License Cost, reduce $8,025 to zero. Planning line 51100 Permanent Employees, reduce from $100,000 to $50,000. Employee benefits line 517520 Group Insurance Schools, reduce, uh, $155,000 from $2789340 to $2634340. Reduce line 517510 Group Insurance Town, reduce $50,975 from $1,714817 to $1,663842. Assessing line 530500 Assessing Consulting, reduce $30,000 from $40,230 to $10,230. Veteran lined, uh, line item 577100 Payments to Veterans, reduce from $70,000 to $50,000. Reallocate Mass Pilot, increase of $94,000 used in capital fiscal '22, um, budget, and move that to operating budget. So those are the recommendations, so that matches 462,000 in additions, 462,000 in deduction. And before we discuss it or open it up, um, the DPW line was a $4,000 reduction based on actuarials. The school appropriation, uh, was obviously not taken lightly at all with the realization that the level service request was for an additional 1.3. This will reflect an increase of $600,000. We believe the schools will and should have the ability to provide a level service due to the ability to encumber more than in prior years due to COVID. We are very mindful that the schools in fiscal '23 and beyond, uh, we consider as part of the town's structural deficit and we need to address. In 15, 14 years doing this, I have always added money to the school budget and this is a deduction that we, uh, took extremely seriously, as we did with all of them. Town council line on the licensing cost, that reflects eliminating the Granica software, which we don't feel has been used, um, to its potential for no fault of us, just not proper software. The planning line, this is a deduction based on, this is a recommendation for the appropriation to go from $100,000 to $50,000. Uh, the Finance Commission does not give recommendations on personnel and all. We, we, we are just recommending a reduction in the appropriation. Employee benefits lines for both the town and the school, again, is usually, i- is something that usually we would be able to find. I mean, the, the town, the CFO and the assistant CFO, when they were creating this budget, took a tremendous amount of care and effort. They, they have to make certain assumptions. We think that there's a little flexibility there, but it's going to be very tight. But the, the money was needed. Uh, the assessing line was another one, it's a $30,000 reduction. Um, we feel that they do have funds and can use funds from their overlay. We're not arguing on the need for the $40,000, but we feel that the funds could come from their overlay to satisfy their obligations for fiscal '22. Uh, the veterans agent line was based on actuarials and the relocation of the Massport Pilot, which has been used in capital the last couple of years. Uh, it's used for two items. One is a police vehicle purchase, which, um, with COVID and everything else, the police vehicle was just purchased now, this past year. So they'll still be receiving a vehicle in fiscal '23 and the hope is that they'll be receiving a vehicle in fiscal '24. The other part of that money is used for sidewalk repair, which we think is incredibly important and we can't thank the DPW enough for all they've done over the last several years. But we feel this is an expense that can be used with opera funding. Opera is much more for, um, infrastructure type projects and not really for operating the general budget. For the increase, the $375,000 in the CBA Salary Reserve, it's just prudent and proper management, uh, to help in negotiations. We have several unions that are out, the needs need to be addressed. Some are out for more than one year in arrears. All these discussions, all these, um, amendments, suggestions had also been discussed with the interim CFO. And he feels that that 375 is, puts us in a better position, probably does not cover, but puts us in a much better position. The outside legal, the increase $35,000 to $100,000. Um, again, we're going through many negotiations and as seen in a previous amendment tonight, we had to add $80,000 to that line for fiscal '21, so we want to be more prepared for fiscal '22. Conservation, increase from $0 to $23,000. Um, we just feel that there's an urgent need for a conservation agent. And we heard some news tonight that might change that a little bit, but there is absolutely a need for a conservation agent. Wherever that need comes from, it will, it's truly, uh, needed. And the assessing line, the employee increase $8,000 from 2002 to 2010 is again, based on actuarials, there were $8,000 in employee related costs that were just not in the budget. Council on Aging line, increase $21,000 on permanent employees in the, in the town manager's proposed budget. He had cut that item, which was basically they have two part-time individuals, one's a two-day-a-week person, one's a three-day-a-week person. Um, and this is eliminating the three-day-a-week person. Uh, you know, I can't argue with anyone that I think the, the portion of our population that was increased the most through COVID is our youth and our, and our elderly. And, and to not be able to go forward in fiscal '22. And, you know, Kathy Dixon does an incredible job as Director of the Senior Center and Council on Aging. And for her not to be given the tools she needs to open that facility at full capacity is a travesty to our seniors. So we strongly encourage that. So those are the motions made, coming out of, uh, recommendations made coming out of the Finance Commission. So I would open it up to the council president for any discussion or amendment.
The Finance Commission's made its recommendation. And since it's a commission and a committee of the council, it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion or amendments that have to be posted? Okay, let's start with Bob Flackatt, Councilor Flackatt.
Uh, I, I truly appreciate all the work that the commission has done on this and I realize that every dollar is really fought over. But I'm very upset at losing this planning, the planner. It took us over a year to get this up to the point where we had a full-time planner. I've been working on this middle school thing and the new safety building and we need a planner to help on both those projects. I'm afraid to mention the traffic problem at Gorman School, but a planner, it helps on all of those projects. We're not going to move forward as fast if we don't have the help of a planner. And a part-time planner is not good.
Councilor DeMarco.
Um, I actually share Councilor Flackatt's thoughts. And as a result, I would like to make an amendment to the mo-, uh, to the motion. Um, I would like to amend the planning line that the permanent employee fee, uh, salary not be reduced from $100,000 and for the Finance Commission and Committee to reevaluate at the end of the next year.
On the motion, you need to add what's about to be said. The situation is always if we're making a motion to take something out, we have to put something in, okay? And I think someone, Grace, do you have a motion you'd like to present?
Yeah, Council.
Motion to amend the recommendations. Would like to say that I do not believe the review of the Finance Commission to recommend cutting in salary based on. I attended all of the. One reason to cut the half. Middle school development and other developments. There's a need for greater revenue in town that we cannot get from residential. It is imperative that we not go backwards. Um, I would like to recommend, oh, as well, um, it was not news tonight in regards to conservation. Planner had agreed to take on the responsibilities that are in the finance. So I would like to make a motion, use the $23,000 from the Conservation Commission agent, uh, line 51100. As the planner will be adopting those responsibilities anyway, go towards that $50,000. Post, uh, salary. Well, I would like to post that line 578100, allocate $7,000, $27,000. Plus the $27,000 that's supposed to be taken.
All right, who? Where are you taking this $27,000 from again? Only $8,000 there, isn't there?
In the town council reserve. Council reserve has $75,000.
In the re.
It's not, it's not mentioned in the.
No, it's not mentioned in the reductions and the, uh.
So she's, so Councilor Honig is making a motion to reduce the, we, the council reserve fund, 578100, from $75,000 to $48,000. So that's what the motion is. And that along with the, um. Right, so she, so she would be reducing that, uh, request for $23,000 for the conservation agent and making that zero. So there would be no increase in that line item. So the $23,000 savings and the $27,000 taken from the council reserve would, would then, Councilor Honig is motioning that that would enable the permanent employee line item for the planner to go back to $100,000.
Okay, all right, that is an amendment. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
All right, is seconded by, uh, Councilor Frino was also on the Finance Committee. Okay, uh, so I guess this is a two-member dissenting of the Finance Commission that are taking this motion. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
So discussing again, and we looked at every nickel and dime in this budget. We spent an awful lot of time doing it. Discussion with the interim CFO, who is a over 30 years experienced CFO. We, I had asked him earlier and brought it up about, because we had originally proposed a reduction to the council reserve and he said he would not touch that line at all. Again, it's a line that used to be $100,000. Last year it was 75. There is some money left in that account this year. Doesn't mean it will be next year, but it was recommended by the, um, interim CFO, who we're paying a good salary to, to give us proper advice not to.
Okay, and, and now it will be 41, is that correct?
I think 48.
48, after we take 27. Okay, so this, so it will be 48. Is there any other discussion? Councilor.
Thank you, uh, just really quick, um, I think it's important, you know, when it comes to people wanting to work in this town, we have interim, a lot of interims right now, put it mildly. Um, you know, I, I don't think it's, it speaks well for this town when we hire somebody and then months after they start, we cut their salary in half. That's not the message I think this town wants to send when it comes to hiring good people. That's all.
Council President, just to make it clear, we are not recommending cutting someone's salary in half. We're recommending an appropriation. The town manager's responsibility is to use that appropriation to adequately fund the position. So I take offense to the fact that we're trying to cut salaries or we're cutting individuals. This is not an individual budget. We just took $50,000 potentially away from the schools, which kills me to do. And I don't hear anybody saying that could potentially be a teacher or that could potentially be a custodian or that could be an ESP. Nobody's talking about that. We're, 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 after incredible amount of work on this, we made a recommendation based on an appropriation, not based on cutting a sa-, cutting a person, asking somebody to work the same amount of hours for half the money. That's insane. So I do take offense to having that come out from the Finance.
Councilor Honig.
I was in the council, I was in the finance.
All right, so I don't think we should be talking about individuals' performance without having an executive session and, and, uh, bringing those people in. So, I mean, that will, I watch that discussion right now. Is there any other discussion about any of the other changes? Hearing none on the amendment. I think we'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor of the amendment made by Councilor Honig signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Aggero.
Yes.
Councilor Flackatt.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Terry.
No.
Councilor Honig.
Yes.
Councilor LaConti.
Yes.
Councilor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Motion carries, eight to one. All right, um, moving on.
We need to vote on that. We need to vote on that.
On the budget as amended.
Now we need to vote on, right, the recommendations as amended.
Okay. Motion has been, you've heard the recommendations, all the other recommendations of the Finance Commission. Is there any further discussion or any further amendments on those? Hearing none, all those in favor of the other recommendations, as read by Councilor Terry, signify by saying aye when your name is called. It should be a roll.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Uh, yes.
Council Honan?
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like we have a budget to vote on.
We do, and we will start at the top, and we will go down through numerous motions to create a budget. In accordance with Charter of the Town of Winthrop, I move that the town council vote to adopt the town manager's proposed annual general fund budget for fiscal year '22 as set forth in the town manager's revised submission dated May 26, 2021, inclusive of personnel, salaries, and operating expenses set forth therein, and that to meet said appropriation, the town shall raise and appropriate from the following other available funds, the sum of $54,994,887, or take any other action relative thereto, including $130,000 from General Stabilization Fund, $39,522 from Cemetery Lot Funds, $5,000 from Cemetery Perpetual Care, $75,000 from Maintenance Stabilization Fund, $48,000 from Regional 911, $450,000 from Opera Funds, $573,013 from Inter Fund Transfer.
All right, motion has been made coming out of committee. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the adoption of the annual general fund operating budget for fiscal year 2022? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
And again, I want to reiterate what the Commission said at the beginning, it, it's very bad that we had to take $130,000 from the stabilization fund and $130,000 from the Opera Funds to get this budget faster, and I hope that that doesn't have to happen ever again. But we need to work on bringing more revenue into this town. That's the only way we're going to avoid going bankrupt down the line.
All right, and I just want to say on these motions, Denise, when we're putting them in, they're all dated, submitted by the town manager, June 10, 2021. That date has to be changed because the town manager wasn't here, June 10, 2021. So reflect that date appropriately, please.
It says submitted by town somewhere.
This one says, they all said. Okay, the second one, I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums operation from the Trash Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year 2022. Personnel and benefits costs, $40,000. Operation and maintenance, $1,825,328 million, for a total of $1,865,328. And as funded therefore, that the town vote to raise $1,865,328 as follows. User fees, other, $601,027. Subsidy from the general fund, $1,264,301.
Motion has been made by the committee, and it does need a second, for the adoption of the Trash Enterprise Fund budget fiscal year 2022. Is there any discussion? Any questions or the amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
No.
Council Freeno?
No.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Yes, I got it right here. Adoption pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 32. In accordance with the town, the Charter of the Town of Winthrop, I move that the town council authorize the continuation of all revolving funds in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 and a half.
Motion's been made by the Finance Committee to adopt the annual revolving budgets for the fiscal year of 2022. Is there any discussion on it? Any amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums of operation of the Harbor Master Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal 2022. Personal and benefit costs, $189,919. Operation and maintenance, $138,011, for a total of $327,930. And as funding therefore, that the town vote to raise the $327,930 as follows, and through the taxes of 327,930, user fees.
Yeah, and user fees, huh?
Yes, well, that's what it said.
All right, any discussion on this? Amendments? Hearing none? All those in favor of passing the motion for the adoption of the Harbor Master Enterprise Fund, please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Recreation Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal '22. Personal and benefit costs, $221,926. Operation and maintenance, $112,742, for a total of $334,668. And as funding therefore, that the town vote to raise the $334,668 as follows, through user fees.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Motion has been made to adopt the Recreation Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year 2022. Hearing no comments, please vote when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal '22. Personnel and benefit costs, $1,542,827. Operation and maintenance, $9,64,975, for a total of $10,607,802. And the funding therefore, that the town vote to raise the $10,607,802 as follows, and that would be through user fees.
A motion has been made by the Commission to adopt the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2022. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will ask you to please vote when your name is called, either yes or no.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Ferry Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year 2022. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? Please vote when your name is called, either yes or no.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Ferry Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal '22. Personnel and benefits costs, $197,96. Operation and maintenance, $245,218, for a total of $442,314. And as funding therefore, that the town vote to raise the $442,314 as follows. User fees of $131,314, and grants or other, $311,000.
Motion has been made for the adoption of the Ferry Enterprise Fund budget. Is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions?
Just one statement on the grant today, that, you know, meeting tomorrow with Department of Transportation for additional grant money, but we have not received any grant money as we sit here tonight. So we, we're working currently on reserves on the ferry. I'll keep the council posted and look for further direction as we close in on using up all those reserves. If you don't get the DEP is, they received our request. You send the Boncory Department of Transportation's meeting will be in the morning, discuss potential funding opportunities from them.
I, I heard that we had some potential to get some grantable help, but this said-
I just wanted the council to know where we stand today and, and what potentially we get.
All right, no other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes or no when your name is called.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
So these following motions are concerning the, well, the following three motions, four motions are concerning the capital part of the, of the budget recommendation. These are concerning capital items that we have the current funds for, and the funds are within-house. There are a few other capital items that are looking for appropriations through Opera Funds, which we're holding off for now, but we do want to take these up now. And I move that the town council vote to transfer $128,500 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to general fund account entitled Fiscal '22 Pumper Engine for a new pumper engine for the fire department and Fiscal '22 Revere Street Project Design for 100% design phase for Revere Street Project or take any other action relative thereto. The funding details would be from Capital Stabilization. $25,000 goes towards the pumper engine, $103,500 goes towards the Revere Street Project Design.
These motions do not need a two-thirds vote. So, motion's been made to transfer $128,500 for a pumper engine. $25,000 for Revere Street, $103,000 for the Revere Street Project. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
I think the stabilization has to be rolled.
Anything coming out of stabilization needs a roll. Yeah, if it's coming from stabilization. You can, you can-
Stabilization.
No, 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 they're coming from different sources, but if it's coming from stabilization, it will.
All right. My copy doesn't say what's coming, this is strange. All right, go ahead, take a roll call, please.
Council Ruggiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
I move that the town council vote to appropriate $40,000 from old special article fiscal '21 library roof replacement to a new account entitled Fiscal '22 Library Hyde Building Windows for Phase 1 of window replacement at Hyde Building or take any other action relative thereto. This money would be coming from one special article to another, just creating a different special article for the use of the money.
So this does not need a roll call? The motion's been made to appropriate $40,000 for the library roof. It's coming from one account to the other. Any discussion on that issue?
Uh, here's, Council President, it says on our agenda here, library roof, but we're talking windows?
Oh, that's type of.
Oh, okay.
Came from the great special article, the library roof. It's coming towards windows. We're able to save money.
Coming from the roof to the windows.
Okay. Everybody got that? Motion's coming for $40,000, the library roof account to go into the library window account. Any more discussion on that?
We ended up, what happened is we ended up saving significant money on the repairs to the roof now, and enabled us to do another.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries.
I, I move that the town council vote to appropriate $19,500 from the E.B. Newton Fund balance to a new account entitled Fiscal '22 Clock Tower Repairs, for repairs to the E.B. Newton Clock Tower or take any other action relative thereto. So this account has a balance of roughly $175,000. If, if this motion went through, the balance would be roughly $155,000.
A motion's been made, coming from committee, needing no second, to move $19,500 from the E.B. Newton Fund to the Clock Tower Fund. Council Freeno?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had estimates for clock repairs for the restoration of the E.B. Newton Clock for $70,000 to $80,000. This sum of 19-5 is not appropriate for the restoration that it needs. It is in deplorable shape. It's rotting, it, the glass is falling. I think this is a poor attempt for the 19-5 to do some Band-Aids. The stage that building alone to do the repairs that need to be done is, is very costly, and if they do this in phases, I'm afraid that it is going to be good money after bad money, and that it wouldn't be appropriate to do it this way. The, the cost that was given to the Capital Asset Committee was from American Steeple, which is a reputable company that's been around for about 100 years. One of his workers actually lives in Winthrop, but the owner has personally reviewed all the photos and taken some time to really do a in-depth process to, to see what needs to be done for the town. And so I'd like to amend that number, and this doesn't come out of the general fund, it comes out of the revolving account of the E.B. Newton. So the money's there, and I'd like to amend that to $80,000.
There's a motion, an amendment to appropriate $80,000 for the Clock Tower repairs rather than $19,500. Is there a response from the committee?
I'm going to second it for discussion.
My motion has been seconded. The amendment is now open for discussion.
Council President?
Yes.
I, I think Council Freeno was right on in his sentiments here. I think, you know, to put Band-Aids on things and patch things and to go up there multiple times is, is kind of not fruitful and probably not economically feasible, economically prudent. I don't know if I'm ready to vote on that right now. I, you know, I thought the discussion was on, I, I agree 100% with Council Freeno. I would like to see a budgeted item that says, I would like to try to put this off until July, the first meeting in July, have it put on the agenda right away so it is not forgotten, and try to get some actual numbers, because I agree 100% with Council Freeno that, you know, to put a Band-Aid, it's a precious asset in the town, and we need to take care of the, the assets that we do have, and I think we need to do it correctly. So I agree with him. I, I don't know if I would vote for the amendment. I would rather vote to, to do it properly, put it off, and come back with a real number. I know Council Freeno has, has had some discussions with a very reputable firm, but I don't know if it has to go out to bid, how it has to be handled, but I would like to do it correctly and do it right.
If I could respond?
Yeah.
So I think the thought process was, is that we would get some possible grant money from Mass. Historic, possible reimbursement from-
from Mass Historic, possible reimbursement from the foundation. Apparently those monies aren't forthcoming. This is a situation where it is dire. If anybody goes by it, you can see the glasses caved in, the, you know, it's a mess. And it is on the National Register of Historic Places. It's prestigious in the town to have a parcel of property on the National Register in its inventory. We have received grants in the past through Secretary Galvin's office and also through the efforts of Speaker DeLeo. And, you know, it's come to the point where it's almost an embarrassment to look at it. And for us not to attend to that in the way it needs to be done, Band-Aid effect, and I understand where Ms. Friedman was coming from, that, you know, we could possibly get other fundings. But if we appropriate this money and dedicate it to get it done, there is still a chance that we may get some appropriation down the road from the foundation or even from Mass Historic. Those grants come out in, you know, first of the year. By the time this goes out for a bid and it would have to go through an RFP, we just needed a number where we could start with, not someone going up there that really doesn't have an idea of historic preservation and how to go about doing it properly with the methods of a craftsman, not a painter with a putty gun. And that's what nineteen thousand will do, not a restoration, which is more than appropriate for the prestige of that building. So I would, I would ask the council to appropriate the eighty. If we get something down the road, we can always leave that money in there. It's not coming from anywhere else except the revolving fund that is generated through the rents of that building.
Mr. President, if I may, I agree with Council Freino and I agree with Council Luteri, not just to agree with them, but it's prudent. And I understand we don't want a piece mail list and I don't want a piece mail list either. But we have applied for our oppo money. Infrastructure projects are permissible pending. Whether a roof to a historic site is permissible, I need time to research. But if we do come back the first meeting in July with those answers, I think it's important to understand the revolving account. We have tenants that are in there. If something breaks in that building, that's our go-to repair, whether it's heat, I forbid, the doors blow off or the heating system goes down, that's the revolving accounts expenditures. That's our go-to money to make sure that we have safe and prudent conditions for our tenants. So, you know, with Council Freino's permission, I'd like to be able to research that, you know, don't appropriate any money because I'm not sure if that will affect the use of the oppo's money if we already appropriate and then tackle this on the.
If I just may make one more statement. We did a study over almost twenty years ago and nothing's happened to that building as far as that tower, the clock. The glass is caving in. We have children in that area. It is serious. It's, you know, to drive by it, you look, you really have to inspect it to see the damage that's going on there and the need to do it and do it right once and for all. And I would plead with my council members to support the, my amendment to this proposal and vote for the eighty thousand dollars. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you. That amendment, any further discussion?
Yeah, just a question, I guess for the town manager. So if we do receive grant funds for this after we've allocated this money, does that money roll back into the revolving fund or does that go into the general?
Typically you cannot receive the service prior to applying for the grant. So all services must be rendered after the application and signing of the grants. I would agree with Council Freino as far as Mass Historic, they're going to give us very small pools of money, but they're not going to give me enough to make up sixty thousand dollars, dealing with Mass Historic in the past. You know, there is no other grant money that I know of and Tanner has researched the historic grants for me. Our only go-to bucket would be oppos, whether or not that qualified in the oppos, we have to examine prior to me committing to using that money for that purpose. A lot of infrastructure is approved and so, but I don't want to miss, you know, be wrong and say we can use that money and then come back to you and say, oh, by the way, and have Council Freino, you know, feel disenchanted over that process.
I don't have this motion because I guess these just came out tonight. I see.
I think the written version just came, I mean, they've been, the written version.
I understand we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand in there. We're talking about taking nineteen thousand out now. What good is the nineteen thousand going to do? The repairs needed eighty thousand. Why are we even discussing the nineteen thousand? We're either put this off for the next, you know, meeting in July or let's, you know, get it done one way or the other. But I actually was thinking we're going to be able to use the oppo money for us when it comes out because this is, you know, an infrastructure repair.
I've read the draft guidance, the draft guidance system. I'm waiting for the final guidance to come out. Certainly I want someone else to look at it and make sure we're saying yes again. I want to be in court. We have friends honest and transparent.
Can we remove this motion and the amendment and put it over to the July meeting?
I wouldn't want to do that, only, Council President, if I can, only because I know in the past we've had issues with getting grant money because of maintenance. You can't apply for grant money for maintenance and that's been neglected over twenty years. So they may say, you know, this is not due to a lightning strike or, you know, high winds or hurricane. This is due from your lack of maintenance, which went on far in our community. A lot of our buildings are in deplorable condition as the fire chief will state and as the police department knows. And so, you know, this is just more kicking the can down the road. You know, I think I've expressed my opinion to everybody one-on-one over the past and, you know, this is, this is the time to do it. And, you know, I really think that we should, you know, use that money. We have it there before it gets spent somewhere else. You know, they seem to find the money for other things all the time, but preservation is an important thing in this, you know, to maintain some heritage and be proud of that building. We're going to have developers coming in and looking to utilize the property, the budding property and some of the other ones. What signal is that going to give them if that building looks deplorable? It's supposed to be a national landmark. It's supposed to be a focal point. It's supposed to be something that, you know, we cherish in our community and we're neglecting it. So with that, I just want to, again, plead for you to put eighty thousand dollars in that line. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just one. And just, I can't disagree with one thing basically Council Farino said, we need to fix it.
And vote for it.
No. And I'll tell you why. Because, you know, we have, we're getting five point four million dollars in oppo funds. We need to know how we can use those. We need to get a better grasp. If this is something we could use it for, it's foolish to use money here that you could have an elevator break and it's cost you thirty thousand dollars in a couple of weeks. We need to get it done. I would request right away that it's put on and not put off. And the eighty thousand or the, you know, that estimate does not fix the entire clock tower. It does not make the clock work. It does the repairs to the tower, makes it structurally sound, makes it look much better, but it doesn't do the actual facework for the clock.
No, it does the facework. It doesn't do the mechanics, which is not in the privy of American Steeple.
Correct. But I think we need to do it right. We need to see if we could use oppo funds. If not, we could literally come back in two weeks and if Council Farino wants and if it's the motion of the council, you could use the money. But I think out of deference to the acting town manager, I think we've got to try to get the opportunity to use funds that we have readily available and to do it right once. But I've moved the question, move the amendment.
All right, the amendment is before us to amend the motion for nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars to the EB Newton Clock Tower repairs to eighty thousand dollars for the clock tower repairs. And I think we can just take vote, all those in favor. Let's do a roll call so we know where it stands.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockett?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Luteri?
No.
Council Honan? Council LaConti?
No.
Council Frehno?
Yes.
As President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, I hope we can get the money back.
Well, you can't, once you spend money, you can't get it back from out.
I'm here on the projects to do.
All right, motion carries.
We need to so vote the main motion.
All right.
Yeah, the amendment passes. Now you got to vote the main motion.
Amendment passes and we now vote the main motion and the main motion is.
The main motion is to appropriate eighty thousand dollars from the EB Newton Fund balance to new account entitled Fiscal Twenty-two Clock Tower Repairs for repairs to the EB Newton Clock Tower or take any other action relative there too.
Okay. All those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to table one week or until the next.
All right, a motion is made to table this to the next meeting. And there's no discussion on a motion to table.
Can we do that? This is the budget. This is for the budget. Can we postpone it a week? The budget might measure.
No, I think we can put it off. I think he has prerogative because, you know, it says all business, these motions just came out today. So I think he has a right, first time we discuss it, to put it off next meeting.
So. I don't want to stop a debate on this, but I do think that some points were raised that made a lot of sense. I don't know, I do think that it would be best for us to understand the liabilities associated with the building. There is a situation where we would be dipping under what, an amount that would be advisable. Not that I disagree with any of what has been said either, but I would like to get a better understanding of what this would do to the fund and potentially what, you know, what impacts that could have if something was to break that we would go under. Because we're making this change now, I think it's important for us to know that.
Mr. President, I'm not sure if you can use privilege under all business. I believe you can make the motion for the council to support that motion because this item is listed in the whole business. I think the privileged opportunity is passed.
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't intending on using my privilege.
Privilege, but a motion can be made to table it. And is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of tableing this motion are signified by saying aye.
Fun information. Yeah, so are we any, under any timeline for this? No? Okay.
I mean, a timeline so that you want to get it done.
No, I understand, but non-statutory, okay. Got it, okay.
I mean, we definitely want to get this done.
No, no, absolutely, that's not what I meant. Yeah, like a statutory.
It's going to happen and we're going to fix this thing when determined the right place to take the money.
And the motion is to table it to our next meeting?
Yes.
Well, no.
First meeting in July.
First meeting in July because we're going to have another meeting maybe in a week. We have to have another meeting in a week and we're not going to have that information yet.
Okay.
All right, so first meeting in July. All those in favor of tableing to the first meeting in July, say yes when your name is called because I don't want any confusion.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockett?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
No.
Council Luteri?
Yes.
Council Honan? Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Frehno?
No.
As President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, motion carries.
Move to the town council vote to appropriate sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty. Let me try that again. I vote the town council vote to appropriate sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-nine cents from two old special articles, fiscal sixteen for Gorman Fort Banks Traffic Study and fiscal sixteen Gorman Fort Banks Kennedy Drive Traffic Designs to a new account entitled Fiscal Twenty-two Fort Banks, Gorman Fort Banks Access Road Study or a Gorman Fort Banks Access Road Study or take any other action relative there too. What this is doing is again, is taking two older special articles and creating a new special article, which we can deal with as time-warm.
Any discussion on that motion coming out of committee? Hearing none, doesn't need a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous and thank God we're going to continue to study that because it was very sad that we had a young girl that was hit in that area right near that school Kennedy rode the past week. Thank God she was okay. I think the chief was there and tended to her and drove her home or back to school.
The officers drove her to school after the parents, that was up at Kennedy and Revere
And these next, these last two, I don't even want to say next to, last two motions. One is revolving around a grant in a match, so they're two separate motions. So the first one is the town council moves, I move that the town council vote to appropriate twenty-six thousand dollars from Watersaw Enterprise Fund retained earnings to a new account entitled CWT Asset Management for the purpose of preparing an asset management plan as required by Mass DEP or take any other action relative there too. That money would come out of retained earnings and it would be funding the plan. It would be partially funding the plan.
And that's funding a new account is the Clean Water Trust Asset Management. That's what the CWT is.
Yes, yes.
Clean Water Trust, okay.
Clean Water Trust.
Clean Water Trust. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered, I think there's only one more motion.
One more motion. I move the town council vote to authorize the town of Winthrop to accept and expand, expend the amount of thirty-nine thousand dollars in the form of a grant awarded by the CWT Clean Water Trust to be administered by the town of Winthrop Watersaw Enterprise Fund. This grant payment is made from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund or take any other action relative there too.
Okay, a motion has been made to authorize thirty-nine thousand dollars to the Clean Water Trust Fund administered by the Water and Sewer Fund. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. All right, we're finished with all business. Only took one and a half hours. Let's get to new business. Under new business, there's a motion that town council vote to authorize the town of Winthrop to accept and spend the amount of five million dollars, five hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars in the form of a grant awarded by the United States Department of the Treasury to be administered by the town of Winthrop Finance Department. The grant payment is made from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in the Treasury of the United States established by section nine nine oh one of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one called APPA or take any other action there too. I believe this has to go to finance and I'm referring it to Finance Committee at this time. Okay, next thing I have is appointments and I am going to.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce you again. I left something out of my manager's report that I think is vital for the council to discuss on the new business.
Okay.
And I would like the council to consider an interim town clerk position to be put in place. Clerk has been out for extended.
That was one of the first things I was going to do.
Thank you. Glad you had my back.
Thank you. I know the recommendation was coming from the town manager because our acting town clerk now has taken a vacation for two weeks and we're really stressed out in the clerk's office with things that are going on. And I had a long conversation with Carla Vitale today and she's on medical leave until at least August fourth, present time, and she has to go through other medical situations I really shouldn't talk about, but I would like to appoint, and it's appointment of the council, so it's the town president, I would like to appoint Denise Twist as the council, so it's the council president, I would like to appoint Denise Quist as the interim town clerk. So, huh?
Make that motion.
I'm making that motion and I'm passing the gavel.
Okay. Denise Quist's name has been put into, into nomination for a position of interim town clerk. Is there any discussion on the matter? Council Farino?
So who's going to be the council clerk? You're going to be able to do both jobs?
Mm-hmm. No problem.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion regarding the nomination? Okay, seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Absolutely.
Council Honan?
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
His move.
All right. Keep, keep the gavel.
Be careful saying thank you.
All right. I'd like to, um, as everybody knows, appointments come up every June thirtieth. Certain appointments that come up because we stagger terms for three years. So on each committee, there are, there are people who are coming off the committees in town and either new people are coming on or, or some people are getting reappointed. And I'd like to do some of them tonight and there will be some of them done at our next meeting. But at this meeting, I would like to make the following reappointments to non-policy-making committees who are term to expire three years from now. So that would be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And that is on the Citizens Advisory Committee. These are reappointments. Karen Chavez, William Galt on the Disability Commission, Richard Currier on the Scholarship Committee, Karen Chavez on the Registrar of Voters, Denise Mahoney on the Historical Commission, Judy Bono, Robert Killis on the Parks Committee, Jack Dowd and Nicole Vacher on the Tree Committee, Danielle Hibbit and Janice Stevens, and on the Airport Hazards Committee, Jerome Fabo. Now, those are all reappointed people.
So those following names, uh, which have been distributed to the members of the council have been put into nomination for the committees assigned to them. Uh, is there any discussion regarding those? Seeing no discussion, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll for those nominations.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
I abstain.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say one thing about the Tree Committee. We received numerous applications for the Tree Committee. We received about six or seven, uh, applications for a five-member committee that already had five members on it that all wanted to stay on the committee and only two were coming up for reappointment this year. But many of those applications, uh, people were very qualified to serve on any committee. So I would ask that, and some of those, all of those people that applied to be on the Tree Committee, would please come back and apply to be on the Conservation Committee? We could use you there. We could use you on the Planning Board. We could use you especially on this new RFP committee because I saw people's applications who were architects and, you know, innovative people and builders who were applying to be on the Tree Committee, and we could really use you on so many committees. So please resubmit your application. Unfortunately, I only had the two, got to put someone on and the people that have been on it and are serving asked to stay on it. So I reappointed them. All right. The next appointment I have is reappointments to committees that are policy-making committees for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And they are the Board of Appeals. I'm reappointing Darren Baird, Thomas Giudina, Giudina, and Jason Wright. On the Planning Board, Honor.
Council President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but since these are policymaking boards, I, I request that we vote on these one at a time.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. The Planning, the Board of Appeals, Darren Baird, Thomas Giudina, and Jason Wright. I shall move.
Okay, is there, um, those names have been put into nomination and have been distributed to the members of the council. Is there any discussion on those nominations? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Okay. On the, um, Planning Board, Honor Merceret and Chris Boyce.
Okay, uh, those names have been put into nomination. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
On the Board of Assessors, Alan Maruzzi and Diane Mackin.
Any discussion about the names put into nomination? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
On, on the Board of Health, we are appointing Bill Schmidt.
On the nomination, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
No.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
On the Licensing Board, I am, uh, reappointing Rich Ackerman and Nick Gracie.
Is there any discussion about the nominations?
Yes, Council President, it's my understanding that there's three vacancies on the Board of License and that the chairman, Mark Chapadine, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing his name, has in fact reapplied. And I think now might be a good time to nominate him as well to make sure the Licensing Board is fully staffed.
I, I am not reappointing him. I will be reappointing another person to the Licensing Board.
I, I'm sorry to hear that. I don't think that I would be able to support any other person other than Mark for that seat.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
These are two reappointments of current members.
Two reappointments, yes. Current member, these are current member appointments.
Okay, any further discussion? Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Okay. As far as new appointments, I am appointing to the council of aging, Gracie Cucinata. Want to do these separately as well?
Yep, yep.
Okay. And to the harbor master planning, David Gorel.
Okay, those names that have been put into nomination have been distributed to the members. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Yes. All right. I'm pointing a new person to the Board of Health, and that is Jean Holgerson. She's a nurse practitioner and I've already spoke to Bill Smith, he'd be glad to have her.
Okay, Jean Holgerson's name has been placed in the nomination for the Board of Health. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Okay, I have a reappointment of Asqually DeFeo as Constable for the town of Winthrop. The reappointment.
Okay, that name has been placed in the nomination. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Flockout?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Terri?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Abstain.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Those are my appointments for this week, but there are, are still slots open on numerous committees. I still have some applications that I'm looking at and, and going over, but as the council's well aware, the only one that can make an appointment to a committee is the council president. Counselors can reject them if they have six votes to reject a person that I recommend, but the only one that can recommend person is the council president. I have asked most of the counselors, they've had anyone they would like to see appointed, and I have appointed some of the people that fellow counselors have requested. So if you'd like to get involved, we have other openings. I am going to appoint them at the next meeting. I'm going to fill every vacancy, so please let me know if you have anybody that's interested in being on a committee, please get that name to me and we will finish these appointments at the next meeting. Now, that brings us up to, when are we going to have the next meeting? We have, uh, to have another meeting because the minutes of tonight's meeting have to be approved so that we can start using the budget on July first. So there are two Tuesdays. We can either do it on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth. Uh, the suggestion from our council clerk was we do it on the twenty-second, but I want to make sure that we have our, all counselors coming in on it and what would be a better day for the, for the council. So if someone would make a motion, make a motion that we suspend council rules and add a meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-second. The agenda would be, uh, subject to change. It's not going to be a full agenda. It's going to be clarifying the minutes and there could be.
Appointments.
There might be an appointment and there might be an executive session or whatever. So I just want to make sure that those are included, but it's not a regularly scheduled. It will not be a full, full meeting. All right, motion's been made to do it on the twenty-second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all right, voting so what, we are having a next meeting next Tuesday night on the twenty-second. I will now open, uh, public comment again. The number, if anybody's still with us at this hour, the number for public comment is one six four six five five eight eight six five six, ID number eight five nine three one four one three nine seven two pound is the ID. Okay. Is there anyone for public comment in the audience? Steve?
Real quick, I won't take, I won't take a lot of your time, but you all have a very challenging job with the budget.